Back in regular session. Okay, next on the agenda, closing and sealing of the executive session minutes. Mr. Ritchie?
I recommend that Minister can't have privacy of students and their records. Home instruction remain sealed. Until an agreement has been reached, which will occur during this meeting.
Discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend that Minister can't have privacy of students and their records. Home instruction remain sealed.
Discussion? All those in favor? Any? Disclosure of executive session votes.
In executive session tonight, we had five votes. The first vote was concerning the executive session minutes of November twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, NEA ESP negotiations. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstained, zero accused. In favor, Abbott, Day, Juicy Johnson, Luzon, Lio, McAllister Stanley. Abstained was Chambers. Vote number two was executive session minutes of November twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, home instruction requests. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstained, one recu-- uh, zero accused. Those in favor, Abbott, Day, Juicy, Johnson, Luzon, Lio, McAllister Stanley, and Chambers abstained. Vote number three was home instruction requests. Ten in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained, zero accused. Those in favor, Abbott, Chambers, Day, Juicy, Johnson, Luzon, Lio, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stanley. Vote number four, home instruction requests. Ten in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained, zero accused. Those in favor, Abbott, Chambers, Day, Juicy, Johnson, Luzon, Lio, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stanley. And the last vote was to return to regular session. Ten in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained, zero accused. Those in favor, Abbott, Chambers, Day, Juicy, Johnson, Luzon, Lio, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stanley.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, recognition.
Please join me recognizing Dr. Arthur Nelson, who passed recently. And Dr. Nelson was upon superintendent, so he was always at the phone or at a meeting ready to give me some advice about comments I would make to the press. I always remember that being of particular interest of his. He served on multiple committees here, multiple building committees that have been involved. So we will send him a letter tomorrow. But I think it's appropriate that we recognize him publicly. Also, high school athletes, Sullivan Cummins, Inspector Shields, who were nominated for RIIL Athletes of the Month and postseason awards. Sullivan Cummins, Simon Manlove, Dan Nimorowski, Joe Gollis, Ben Whedon, Luke Jarrett, Kyle Merritt, Matt Power, and Josh Smithy. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public forum. So if anybody has anything to say that's not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to go up to the podium and just tell us your name and what community you're from. Seeing no one's interested, we'll move on. To policy, A, home instruction policy.
You have one policy for review tonight, and we recommend changes to it because there's a gap of time between when we approve the program of instruction internally and when you vote. It's kind of like a no is man note. So what we're proposing is that the date of approval actually be the internal approval date, which means that that gap will not make kids prone. So we're recommending approval or change to the council.
Discussion? Seeing there's none of those in favor? Any? Moving on to business. First on the agenda is A, Matty Potts Memorial Field House Status Report.
So tonight, we're very happy to have Stephanie in today with us to give you an update. And all that under the terms of the agreement that the vote is approved. Do you have oversight of this project? So you want to make sure that you are feeling very confident in what's going on. That's why Dan and Stephanie are here tonight. So I will be recommending that you vote to approve the project once you hear their presentation. And there were some documents in your packet also that you might want to take a look at. Welcome.
Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you to our foundation board members, our architect, Mr. Frank Karpowitz from Wakefield, and our field house building committee members that are here tonight. Mr. Dave Ducharme with Turgeon Industry Corporation out of Cranston. Mike Shields, Mr. John Dobson. Coach Habarak. Nate Berry is one of our student athlete members. Emma Hughes, one of our student athlete members. Brittany Godbout. And Kobe Myrtle is our foundation board member. Did I miss anyone? And special thanks to Mr. Ritchie for his consistent guidance and support. We originally started this vision nearly two years ago in hopes of providing the more imminent needs of the outdoor athletic stadium, particularly to provide indoor bathroom facilities rather than the existing porta toilets that we use, and to expand the capabilities of our booster club concession stand. The boosters have never even had running water in the existing stand and have to bring in absolutely everything to even make hot chocolate. So those started off as our needs. Fast forward, because of our substantial generous and continuous community support in honor of our daughter, we are now able to incorporate the addition of home and visitor locker rooms, a private officials locker room and bathroom, onsite athletic training room, as well as a central atrium that is hopeful to be large enough to host senior night events or even small community events. This would help to eliminate the more extensive traffic into other parts of the campus, particularly the cafeteria and the indoor bathrooms in the existing facilities, particularly from visiting teams. The best location we found to meet all the above purposes is the area between the existing entryway to the stadium and the baseball field where the current batting cages are. And I can lay that out a little bit more so with our bigger plan here. This area would accommodate the most athletes during their home games, including baseball, field hockey, football, men and women's, and unified cross-country track, soccer, and lacrosse. Our ultimate goal is to make the Matty Potts Memorial Field House as inclusive as possible, to represent the way Matty lived her life, and to continue to give back to the community that helped make her the person and the student athlete she will forever be known as. In regard to our second handout, the matching for Matty flyer paving the way to the Matty Potts Memorial Field House, this is expected to launch tomorrow on the eleventh to meet the needs of a currently anonymous grant of fifty thousand dollars. We've been asked by the grantee to run this as a challenge grant, which involves raising a matching fifty thousand dollars through brick paver sales as well as foundation sponsorship. Mr. Keith Frost, who is the owner of Higher Grounds Community Coffee House, is helping us lead this campaign. Hoping that you all received the field house plans in your packets as well as the matching for Matty paperwork that is been, has been updated, and we can hand that out as well. And then I'm happy to orient everyone on a larger scale, and myself, as well as our building committee experts can answer some more specific questions. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Does everyone understand kind of the orientation of this for the most part? This essentially would be the entryway of the existing stadium and between the baseball field, so we would serve all the purposes, both stadium side as well as baseball field hockey fields. So we can go over that more if there's specific questions.
No, can we have any questions here? I'll break the ice. Where is the wastewater flowing to? There's no septic system for this, and we'll be tied in with ours?
We will, as of now, we're trying to find out the specific answers, but we would likely have to absorb the costs with Matty's foundation to put in a septic system in order to accommodate that since there isn't one existing.
But it's really not too far from ours, from the galley system in between the middle school and the high school.
Thoughts?
We need to look into that a little bit more.
Okay.
And we have discussed that. We're waiting for our civil to come back so that we can take a look at exactly what's in the street as far as water waste and see if we can tap them, see what the resources are and how we can move on.
Hi. Thank you. So I'll be going to approve. But in the meantime, would you consider a gender inclusive factor being included as well? I see that male and female, but certainly in the specific facility.
Yeah.
Beyond the NEA retirements, could there be any to why it's not going to be used?
Yeah, and we didn't want to specifically label anything, but just the purposes of the project, that's where we started. But certainly that's on the forefront to make that, you know, obviously gender inclusive and gender neutral as we move forward also.
Just add though, right now the Rhode Island building code doesn't incorporate gender neutral bathrooms. So we'll have to need building code first.
So that would be the minimum, would be to have identified bathrooms. If you could add an additional.
You can add unisex or gender neutral or, yeah.
So would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. Barbara?
Barbara Kapalba. On that same question, what about the concept of family bathrooms since we will have many small children and adult parents obviously with them?
Yeah, I think that's probably the same room.
Good.
What's the total square footage?
Right now it's just over three thousand square feet.
Three thousand fifty-five.
Yeah. Sure.
Anybody else? Barbara?
I'm sorry, I haven't seen the plans. Will the building be lit as well so that the surround is lit? Because our fields are barely lit. But will the building itself be lit for safety and for accessibility?
Yeah, well, we're going to include exterior lighting as well as interior lighting. We're going to have to coordinate that with, I think, probably the facilities to make sure we'll put the light in place and also security. So we'll be reviewing all those issues at the appropriate time at that point.
Anybody else? Um, Barbara. Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara. Don't. What? Axophrax.
Sorry, I haven't seen it, so I'm just thinking about. And then how will the maintenance be taken care of? Does that go through the school budget? Does it go through something else? What is the maintenance plan for the building and the surrounding?
That was discussed last year at the district meeting.
Yeah, I just don't know the answer on that.
Dan, you want it?
Yeah, I can.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So that's certainly been a big question. We did discuss that at the quorum when it was approved. Once you're able to look at the diagram, Frank has helped us incorporate a significant solar panel, which pretty much encompasses the entire left side of the atrium. And our hopes are that not only would that offset a lot of the maintenance costs, but when the building isn't being used, essentially five months of the year when it's really cold, we're hoping that we would actually be able to incorporate that into the rest of the campus and actually give power back to the rest of the campus in the times the building itself isn't using those facilities. As far as other cost savings we had discussed at the quorum, the current budget that is utilized for the porta toilets is a cost savings of, where's Mike? What are the current, the existing porta toilets?
Four thousand dollars.
Is about four thousand a year also. So we're taking all those things into consideration, and while we are getting estimates and materials and everything to blend in with the rest of campus, we are using, hopefully, the most, obviously durable and maintenance free that we can access within our budget.
Any more questions? Linda?
Just on that same, well, do you foresee, now that we have budget coming up soon, do you foresee that we need to think about that for the upcoming budget? Or do you think that's going to be something that we, what's the project, the project, how, what is the length of the project? Like when do you?
Our goals, our timely goals is to break ground April eleventh in honor of Matty's twentieth birthday. And our ultimate goal is to have it up and running for pre-September.
September two thousand twenty.
Yep. And I think we'll have a better idea once we have estimates of building materials and, you know, heat and all of those things, which we don't have all those numbers yet. We'll have a better idea of what is it actually going to cost to run this building. We're very conscious of trying to make that as minimal as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Just, it looks like a very nice addition to the campus. Thank you for doing that. Enhance the opportunity for the outfits. That's great.
No, thank you. We're trying to, you know, really, we have such a beautiful facility anyway, and I think our athletic department does an incredible job supporting our athletes and the boosters in which I'm a member now as well. We're just trying to really, I guess, finish off that area while bringing everything together at the same time is what our alternate vision has been. And I think Frank has really helped put that on paper to encompass all of the ideas that we've thrown at him and to put it in a low maintenance, high durability building that is going to both honor Matty as well as Charahow Athletics for decades to come is our ultimate goal. Thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Ritchie?
I recommend that you vote to approve this project.
Discussion? Seeing there's none of those in favor? Any? Since we have such a wonderful crowd, you folks can stay. We just have a few more things on here. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of B, the acceptance of the district audit.
Which is the most exciting thing. So Mr. Wilkinson is here. The audit subcommittee has met and has had their questions answered. And the recommendation is that you accept the audit and place it on file. And that is, once the recommendation is acted upon, Mr. Wilkinson can see a process of the audit.
Discussion?
Good evening, and thanks for inviting us. I did prepare a few notes on the audit, the results of operations for the year. As was mentioned, we did meet with the school's audit committee on two occasions. One in planning to review our risk assessments, the activity of the district. We were planning on focusing on the audit, some of our unpredictability tests. We were able to get, again, input from the committee on operations, which helps the overall process. We have met with the audit committee on the draft of the report, and I believe a draft has been circulated here. There are two open items that we're working on resolving. One is the municipal transparency portal presentation, which goes into the audit report. That's been submitted by management to the state for approval. As soon as that comes in, that gets forwarded to the report. The other is the engagement on the uniform chart of accounts compliance. During the process, the state changed some of the procedures on that. So that, the work has been done, needs to be reviewed, and again, needs to be reconciled, the overall final financial statements, once that transparency portal presentation has been. We're not expecting any changes, not expecting, you know, any other edits at this point in time. Just waiting on those final pieces to kind of fall in place so the report can be collated, published, and issued. You know, for the fiscal year that just ended, the general fund ended the year with an unassigned fund balance of just over two point eight million dollars, which is roughly four percent of the operating budget, slightly above what the district's fund balance policy is, but nothing significantly, you know, significantly above that to speak of. The current year increase in the total fund balance was just over three hundred nine thousand dollars. Again, on a fifty-seven million dollar budget, three hundred thousand is pretty razor-thin margin to be operating on, which is good. Within the draft report, page sixty-nine shows the budget versus actual results. Resid revenues were positive variance of a little over two hundred and two thousand dollars. Again, on a fifty-seven million dollar budget, two hundred and two is pretty razor-thin. There were some favorable variances in expenditures. The total variance is about a million four. A lot of that was in employee benefits. Another positive year with the health program was experienced, as well as some savings in purchase services. As part of the financial statement audit, we do do an audit of compliance with federal grant programs. Please report that there were no findings related to non-compliance or internal control weaknesses over federal programs that were noted to be reported. All good news. At the end of the engagement, once we finish up the UCOA piece and stuff, there will be a letter of observations and recommendations. We've discussed those with management. There are a few points in there, certainly nothing that represents a material weakness or deficiency in controls, really more just opportunities for improving operating effectiveness, maybe strengthening a few things. One deals with documentation of internal control and how those controls are communicated when consistently. Recommending the formalization of a risk management program, where certain transaction cycles and areas can be studied on a periodic basis from a risk management perspective. Some comments regarding cybersecurity matters, there's, they're in the news more and more, and local governments are more and more frequently becoming targets. And then just to review, there's a new leasing standard that was issued by the standard setters, which is going to be, probably implemented, just for the district management to start working on. The pieces are going to need to pull that together. We did receive full cooperation from management. Everything was provided timely, which is why we're here in December before December thirty first, new date. Again, thank management and staff for all the cooperation we received. We provided full access to everything. Noted no matters of the management opinion shopping with other firms or treatment of anything. There were no disagreements, no significant adjustments. Everything went about as according to plan as it could. So we're very appreciative. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before we go to discussion, just like to acknowledge this, the audit subcommittee for the job they did. Any discussion, any questions?
I'm curious, is there any thinking behind the state changing the chart of accounts? Is it because of bringing out new programs or are they just?
I think it's an iterative process every year when they get results. And it's part of the process, the Department of Ed has to approve everyone's preliminary submission. And I think as part of some of those, some of the things they find in error each year, they look and periodically will change some of the procedures we do to make sure that those things are caught more consistently by all the audit firms that do network. I don't think there's anything systemic or, you know, any new areas they want to look at. It's more just that process of refining what's happening. They never take any process procedures away, though. They were adding another layer, another disclosure, but that's kind of the nature of the game.
So is this process, or, this is where you'd find if something was wildly missing? So, let's try that again. Is this the process that, where you would find something wildly over budgeted or wildly overspent? Okay, and you didn't find any of that. I believe you said a couple of times razor-thin margin.
Yeah, and.
I don't know.
On the expenditure side, there were actually under expenditures of appropriate, so a million four. Again, a lot of that was in the health program, which is largely out of the district's control. It's, you know, people don't get sick and they don't have claims, it works out well. Certainly, there were purchase services that were under budget, supplies were under budget. There was nothing systemically that we noticed where there's, you know, lack of controls over purchase orders or review of budget and not to let it, none of that. You know, a lot of our comments and findings come from proposing adjustments to make the numbers correct. There were no material adjustments, no significant dollar gains. Again, the numbers that you receive on an interim basis, we do look at those and then at the end of the year, make sure that what you're seeing, you know, what your flight plan is during the year is where you end up, and that's largely where you are. So there is, again, no comments or recommendations on weaknesses in those processing controls during the year. All good news.
Any more discussion? Barbara?
I just had a discussion, when you brought up cyber, the cyber problems. And in specific, I'm interested in ransomware and the problems with that. So does the audit committee or subcommittee or your auditors have backup records pretty consistently so that you can prevent those kinds of hacks? The reason I'm saying it is my sister's, has a very large company, and that just happened to them again. So I know it's pretty rampant, and I would make sure, I would like to make sure that your auditors have backups on a more regular basis so that they can at least help protect from that. Because that is becoming quite a serious problem in the business world, and you have enough money to be interesting.
As part of our audit procedures, we do look at IT general controls to the extent that, and the district is fortunate, there are not major systems that are internet facing. You're not doing e-commerce or anything like that. So we do look at overall controls, how backups are being made. They are being made periodically, they're buried on multiple servers. Some of our comments are going to be dealing with training of employees on phishing attacks, identifying hacked emails, stuff like that, formalizing that process, looking at configuration of firewalls and stuff like that, having those independently tested as a verification process that there are, there are procedures in place. You know, we do, this is part of the financial statement audit. Again, we're looking at things that would make the financial statements misstated. The cybersecurity piece kind of is a byproduct of that. And we do do other, you know, audits of cybersecurity readiness and stuff like that, for people who apply for insurance, to at least set a baseline that, you know, procedures are in place. I know the district's internal IT team was very cooperative with us, answering questions that we had on. I know the, the district's internal IT team was very cooperative with us, answering questions that we had on the cybersecurity stuff. It's a moving target, there's no, you're never done with it, you never can say that, you know, I put my plan and places on the shelf. It's a, it's a, again, continuing process of evaluation. The courts are always one step ahead, or two steps ahead in some cases, so. You know, certainly, I think some of our comment will go to more of those proactive steps you can take. Making sure that there's adequate funding in the budget for those items, and up with the expectation that there's no, it's not a one-year fix. It's going to be an investment over time to keep those systems up and running.
Any more questions? We have a motion on the floor in a second. We'll move on to that. All those in favor of accepting the district order? Oh, well, it's the answer.
I just wanted to publicly thank Dale Wilcox and the members of the business office. Dale is actually the point person with the auditors during the audit, and most of the information goes back and forth between her and the auditors. And she's the big reason why it was a process.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
C, resolution of Open Meetings Act litigation. Your timing is impeccable, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What we have in front of you is a settlement agreement that I have worked on and persuaded plaintiffs' counsel to agree to. It would resolve the three pending Open Meetings Act suits, which are costing you time and money regarding incidents that occurred as far back as 2016. There is no admission of liability as part of this agreement. It has been our position all along that the school committee did nothing improper. And we could defend that in court, however, that would be expensive and not the best use of your resources. What we have agreed to do is something that I recommend to school committees all the time, and that is, every other year, for the next three cycles, we will invite the Attorney General's Office to come and do a presentation to the school committee with regard to the Open Meetings Act. And for that meeting, we will expect all of you to be there, unless you have a doctor's note. In addition to you attending, any of the plaintiffs who are public officials. For example, Mrs. Thompson is a member of the Hopkinton Town Council. She was one of the plaintiffs. She also will be required to attend this training. So, you know, if you're sitting in these chairs in 2002, the first cycle of training is in the first three months of 2020. If you're sitting in these chairs at that time, you will need to be here. But likewise, if Mr. Bisho is still serving on the Richmond Town Council, he will be expected to be here, unless he has a doctor's note. There is no payment of legal fees. We were asked to make a very large payment of legal fees, and we said absolutely not. The school, the Charahoe Regional School Committee has done nothing wrong. So there is no exchange of money. There is a release whereby the plaintiffs are releasing all of their claims related to Open Meetings Act cases through the date of this agreement. They're not releasing claims that they might have other than the Open Meetings Act. So if, you know, last week, one of the plaintiffs fell down the stairs at, at Richmond Elementary School, we're not expecting them, her, you know, his or him or her falling down the stairs at Richmond Elementary is not part of this lawsuit. On the other hand, any claims that these, this group of plaintiffs has regarding the Open Meetings Act are done and gone within a week of collecting signatures, and we will be looking for signatures from your current chairman plus each one of the people who was also personally sued in this case. Again, some of, at least two of them don't even live in the area anymore. We're going to have to track down those two people to get their signatures. The same exercise, by the way, is going on on the plaintiff's side. They need to collect the signatures of all the plaintiffs. I strongly recommend this settlement to you. I would encourage you to vote for us, so we can put this behind and move on.
Discussion.
Mr. Anderson, I want to understand that one of the plaintiffs here is an elected member for the Old Fire District. Would they be required to?
If they have to file an ethics form, anyone who has to file an ethics form would be covered. I don't, I can't answer here whether the Fire District Board has to file an ethics form. If you ask me to guess, and I don't like to guess, I would guess they do.
No, it's scary, because it is elected by the voters of the Fire District.
I would guess that they do, but I don't know, I can't say, I checked that with the Ethics Commission.
I'm not going to feel good.
I understand, Mr. Dan.
John, you mentioned that the plaintiffs asked Charahoe to pay a considerable sum?
Yes.
What was that sum?
$25,000.
So they asked for us to pay $25,000 towards the legal fees?
Yes.
Did they understand that that $25,000 would come out of the Charahoe school budget?
I will assume that they did.
So they knew it wasn't our personal money, that it was a taxpayer money?
I, I, I will assume that they did.
Okay, and so to be clear, it would not, whether they assumed so or not, it would not be our personal funds. It would be funds taken from the Charahoe school budget?
Yes.
And given to their lawyer?
Yes.
For this lawsuit? Okay, as we end the vote season, I think that's just an important consideration.
I, I understand completely, you are not paying any fees to the plaintiffs.
Any more discussion?
I'm just, just to comment, I think this is about as good as it's going to get, right? I mean, that's my feeling.
Yes, I, yes.
Considering how difficult the, the whole thing, the whole process was from the beginning. But thank you for negotiating this to this point.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what Donna said, we're very fortunate to have you representing us in various legal cases. That you represent us in a very professional and timely manner.
Thank you.
Joy?
Are there any court costs related to this?
Um, in, we're not paying any court costs either. The plaintiffs had to fi, pay, to file their complaints originally, that is on the plaintiffs. We are not reimbursing them for court, court costs. We are writing no checks.
Well, I don't have a question, but I do have a statement, I've mentioned it before, but I, I'm confused as well. I'm just stumped to this day that somebody can initiate an action and turn around sue others because they didn't get the outcome of the action they wanted.
And all I can say is, in America, anybody can file a lawsuit. I will defend that right of any one of you, or anybody in the audience. This is, this is America, people have a right to do it. That doesn't mean that sometimes the system gets abused, just like free speech sometimes gets abused. But I would not give up free speech for the abuse, and I would not give up the right of plaintiffs to bring a lawsuit. That being said, this is a lawsuit that should never have, these are lawsuits that should have never been brought in the first place.
Barbara?
So there's no way to recoup the money that the district has spent on the lawsuit, either?
And, and that is correct. I will point out to the district that the district's costs were minimal. I'm not going to say that they were zero, because for a long time, this was done under my fixed fee contract, and it didn't add a dollar of cost to you. When it became really abusive in terms of what was going on, you know, the fact that one of, that a former member of the school committee was a plaintiff in all three cases, it's not appropriate for me, it's, it's not frankly fair to me to be, you know, her punching bag. And we agreed in my, I can't remember, Barry, if it was the July 2019 contract or the July 2018 contract, that I would be paid separately for this litigation. The amount, though, has been de minimis.
We thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second, discussion's over. All those in favor of accepting the resolution? The answer?
Those people who are defendants, I would, I believe we have a couple extra copies. I'd like to start getting signatures tonight from some people.
Can they be on separate copies?
They can be on separate, they can be on separate copies.
Okay.
The last, um, pages have signature lines. I believe Catherine, Donna, Bill, Lisa, and Sylvia. I would appreciate getting your signatures tonight, and we will work on looking around the country for a copy.
You ready?
Are we ready?
Do you need a ready signature?
No. Yeah, I know, I actually know how to get those.
Mr. Janet, can we take a final research so we can get these signatures? Is there a motion on the paper right now?
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Take care of that email, John.
No, I have separate ones that would probably have to be, I have one here. I have several, but I didn't know that they're all. Wait.
We have to have the workshop.
Yeah, we have had them several in the past.
I know that, yeah.
And I didn't break them, but they've never responded to the last. So, okay, great. They were very good about that decision.
Hi, John. You're, you're earlier than you said. The only reason I've remained in this. I'm wondering about the secret things that, and I did. And he owns.
George, you know, you write, George, your name should be on it. Oh, well, then that's why. Yeah, so.
Okay. I'd like to. And I could like separately, I'd like to.
Yeah.
John, is your address lucklord.com?
Pardon?
Your email address ends in lucklord.com.
No, that's, that's my old, my old.
PRF.
PRCS.
John, do you want me to hold this?
Yeah. Yeah, because Rod, for example, Ryan is assigned, he's not here.
I'll see him, we'll see him in the state.
And he has assigned some place, he has assigned some chair of school committee, any use?
Close line, and then after his name is.
I'd wear his name, he's assigned to one.
Thank you, which is a red, at window number five.
Prom.
Go back to regular session. Next on the agenda is new legislation affecting school committees, which is?
Good evening. We have in front of you a packet that I hoped to do as an electronic version, but didn't get it in in time, which is my responsibility. What I'm going to do today is do a very high-level overview of the changes, which are very significant from the General Assembly last spring in terms of the education reform. If you recall, the General Assembly, the folks at the State House, were very distressed last spring by the test scores. And even though, you know, Charahoe's test scores were among the best in the state, the General Assembly noted that, from a state perspective, the test scores were substantially lower than Massachusetts. And the Massachusetts children and the Rhode Island children, for the first time ever, took the same test. I will comment that Massachusetts has been working on this since the late 1980s, number one. Number two, Massachusetts has pumped considerable funding into supporting those reform efforts. They have put the dollars where they count, and they don't take the dollars back through bills from DCYF to pay buses and so forth, like Rhode Island does. So it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison, but it's a comparison that was made. School committees are very dramatically affected, but what I'm going to do is walk through each of the levels of control of education in the state of Rhode Island, and explain what's going to happen. First thing is the Board of Education. The Board of Education is, I believe, nine people picked by the governor. And they are essentially the school committee for the state. And they've been...
And they've been recharged with instituting some statewide standards in math, ELA, science, technology, history, and so forth. They also are going to get into the business of reviewing and approving curriculum. And they are also making sure that on a school-by-school basis, that school, all schools are making progress. So the days that you can say, "We're really doing great," and, "Oh, yeah, we have that other school," those days are, those days are over. School committees. The big news for school committees is that you are no longer part of the process, the hiring process. So you, this is the last meeting that the superintendent, I don't know if you asked that as part of the consent agenda for any appointments, this is the last time that's going to happen. All appointments now are done at the building level with the superintendent's approval. What you're going to have to do, and there's going to be a lot of policy work that comes in this spring, and my firm is doing this presentation all over the state right now, is that you're going to have to adopt a lot of policies to make it clear to building principals how the hiring process works, what their budgets are, and their responsibilities for living within their budgets. Superintendents, their role was changed. The superintendent, believe it or not, is no longer responsible for overseeing the care and control of schools, the building principals are. And again, that is going to create issues when building principals take positions that are perhaps not fiscally prudent. This puts a huge amount of responsibility on building principals. I had building principals say in another district, you know, "Where did this all come from? Am I going to get paid extra for doing all of this?" And the answer in that district was, "No, and your association asked for this." You know, so be careful what you ask for. The superintendent does not have to ask anymore for your permission to appoint somebody. The only people that you hire and fire now are the superintendent himself, me, and the clerk. That's it. The superintendent is responsible for the overarching discipline process, but discipline, again, is done now, it is more of an emphasis of discipline being done at the building level. Some details of this have not been worked out in terms of, will the school committee still hear, superintendent and the school committee still hear disciplinary appeals? I'm frankly not sure how that's going to work, whether parents can go straight from the schools to, you know, to the Department of Education. A general principle of this legislation is it cuts few people out of a lot of things and it cuts the superintendent out of a lot of things. Again, it was to try to emulate the Massachusetts model, but at this point, I have not seen the Bucks emulate Massachusetts. Within the last few weeks, their General Assembly and Governor Baker infused a ton of money. Now, were there fights over, you know, should the money go to Diten Rehoboth, or should it go to Fall River, or should it go to Blackstone? Yeah, there were fights over that. But on the other hand, just about every district is getting an increase in funding in Massachusetts as a result of their reform. Okay, let's talk now about principals. Principals are the educational administrators, the managers of their school and school property. They are still subject to the supervision and direction of the superintendent, but, you know, they are the kings and queens of their building. There are some limits, though, on principals, not so much from the superintendent and the school committee, but the principal is also supposed to engage in participatory decision-making. And a group that was really empowered by this legislation is the school improvement teams. And every school in the state is going to have to have a school improvement team, and the school improvement team is going to have a lot of say-so in terms of how buildings actually operate. So principals, what are, what are going to, what are some of their new responsibilities going to be? They're going to be responsible for the evaluation process, they're going to be responsible for the care and control of the schools, they're going to put together performance plans for initiation teachers, and they're going to present budgets to the superintendent. One of the two areas that the school committee does retain power, and it's the power of the purse, is the budget. That's one place where you still have power. The other place that you have power, I've talked about the fact that you're going to need policies, policies are going to be crucial. For example, you're going to have to have a policy that makes it very clear to principals that the salary range for hiring people is X to X. Okay? That principals can't, when they engage in the hiring process, that they have to obey the Fair, the Fair Employment Practices Act and not, you know, and not discriminate. There are also, the principals with regard to the hiring process are still subject to getting the approval of the superintendent, so there is a check there. They are also subject to whatever's in the collective bargaining agreement, another place where you have some power in terms of what happens. I will say that you have, you know, several years ago, I was driving around Swansea and I was listening to the radio and Deborah Kissed was on, and Deborah Kissed identified the model teachers' contract in Rhode Island that she thought was very good. It was Charahoe's. I almost drove off the road. That, you know, she said something nice about Charahoe. You have a really good, you have a really good contract, you also have a really good relationship with your employees, and I think that's something that you need to work hard. Both of those things are things that you need to work hard to protect. With regard to the school improvement teams, they are responsible for making recommendations to the principal. They help him put together his budget. They help together to put his school improvement plan together. At the high school, department heads have to be on the school improvement team. So what does this mean? First of all, our principals are going to have to become much more versed in the contract than they have ever been before. The days of saying, "I don't know what the contract says, I'll ask central administration," are over. In one of my districts, I, the union president, I was retired now, I used to say she had her magic wand, and she would simply say, you know, "If you don't do this, if you don't do this, I'll file a grievance." And I had principals quake and quaver when she would do that. And it, and, you know, after she retired, she joked, if they looked, opened up what I was waving and read it, they would realize that I'm not as powerful as they think. They are, in addition to that, they have to make, be thoughtful about how the sit teams operate. In some schools, I have seen it, the sit teams become runaway trains. And the sit teams, for example, in one of the districts, I believe that the sit team by contract is a majority of people from the union. That is not a healthy situation. When that happens, I know in another district, actually the same district, the agendas for faculty meetings have to be reviewed and approved by the union before it can be discussed at a faculty meeting. That's an example of contract. It's also an example in terms of the sit teams, that the sit teams, you know, they need, they need guidance and they need to be managed. I mean, with all due respect, when this got passed, it was, it's going to be in the future the Lawyers Full Employment Act. You're going to have to be careful with problems of consistency. They may do it one way at Charleston and they may do it a different way at Richmond. And the theory behind this is, that's wonderful, but you have one contract. We don't have a separate contract for Richmond and Charleston. And when the principal at Richmond says, you know, "Everybody can do X," and the principal at Charleston says, "No, you can't do X in my school, we're going to get grievances." So watch for that.
John, Eric.
So John, I refer to this as kind of Massachusetts light.
Yes.
And without the money.
Right.
So, given that so much policy work needs to be done, is there any downside for us to continue as we have in the past until the policy work is done?
And the answer to that is no. This committee, the way that this district has done it, is the superintendent proposes policies to you and then you vote on the policies. That's the way that it's worked very well here and you should continue to do that.
I'm talking about the appointments that I would put on the agenda.
No, there are no more, there are no more.
So we can't continue as we have until the policy work is done?
No, you could, if you wish to inform the school committee after the fact that, you know, a new fourth grade teacher has been charred, hired in Hopkinton, her name is Mary Smith, from informational, but it has, there's no, there's no consent agenda item for hirings anymore. The, all hi, you're the final word. The building principals propose and you're the one who says yes, yes or no. The school committee has taken out of it. And, you know, people will say, "That's great, it takes politics out of it because, you know, you're all evil politicians and so forth." I'm not so sure that this is going to be helpful. Instead of, I know somebody on a school committee, and let me, by the way, make it clear, I have never once had this problem in Charahoe. I have it all the time in one of my other districts. You know, where people will walk in and say, "You gotta, you know, hire Cousin Tilly, you know, her daughter can't get hired anywhere else, so we're going to hire her," and so forth. In that sense, it's great, but it's also going to become, in some schools, frankly, I know somebody on the sit, the sit team, I know the principal. So we're just moving the power away from school committees and to the sit, and to the sit teams.
John, is that resignations and leaves and everything?
Yeah.
Consent of consent, it's everything?
Yeah. This committee is still responsible for approving bills, but in terms of the employment process, the only people that will ever come to you for appointment are the superintendent, Donna, to the extent she is the clerk, not as secretary to the superintendent, but to the extent that she is clerk, and me. Donna.
We've traditionally sat on interview board, interview panels for hiring. Is that going to be?
And the answer, and the answer to that is, it will be school-based, and I don't see anything in the law that precludes you from being part of the school improvement team in Charleston. But I also want to make it very clear that there's a lot to be fleshed out here. And I, you know, how this is going to play out in practice, I don't know yet. I think, you know, you may hear some squawking, and it may also be squawking in other districts in the state where people say, "Well, why is that school committee member on our, you know, our SITT? That school committee, you know, shouldn't be there, and Rye is going to have to rule on that." And I suspect I know what Rye might say in that. School committees are really in disfavor right now, unfortunately. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. And I'm a former school committee member, eleven years. Sylvia.
So many people are on Rye. Where do these people come from? Anybody from the Charahoe area? Or are they all from the northern part of the state?
Well, who are, who, this is the general, this was all done by the people in the State House, this is the General Assembly. I don't know, what do you have? One, there's one representative in Richmond and one in Hopkinton or something? You know, and Charleston gets sandwiched in with the guy from Block Island? You know, you have three. I, I live in Pawtucket, we have five. You know, Providence has about fifteen. So this was decided by the General Assembly and then approved by the governor.
Jane.
John, what about district positions like the Director of Facilities or the Director of Special Education?
And the answer to that is, at this point, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Linda.
John, I'm wondering maybe I'll just tell them. If I understand you correctly, at this time, there's no funding to train these people or training.
I, I am not aware of it. I am not, I, you know, I defer to Mrs. Rogers if she's heard of any grant money. And she's shaking her head, no. This is the problem in, you know, I, I'll be very blunt, this is the problem in Rhode Island, in that the General Assembly comes up with all these great ideas and then they don't put the funding behind it. And I will say, I have the utmost respect for the General Assembly. My mother was up there for twenty years. But it's a real problem here in Rhode Island. They don't put the money behind it, whereas Massachusetts just put, literally in the last month or two, put more money behind their education. And everybody, even, you know, the Sharon's, you know, wealthy communities, they may have only gotten, you know, fifty or sixty thousand dollars, but a lot of money was pumped in, and a lot of money has been pumped in over twenty years. And a lot of thought has gone into it, how Massachusetts has done it. It's been really, you know, to address things like ELL learners and poverty and trying to get everybody's results up. And it's worked in Massachusetts, but it's taken them twenty years to do it and they've put the money behind it. In Rhode Island, we haven't done it.
Bill.
Seems like Rhode Island has jumped into something that they really didn't think about. I'm sitting here thinking, you know, this individual principal will have care and control of the five entire facilities. We have one facilities director here at Charahoe. Who does he answer to first?
And that's been, that's a great point. That's another detail that simply has not been worked out. And I think that there is going to be tension in some school districts because principals will write CYA memos to the facilities directors saying, you know, "My building's too hot, my building's too cold, the doors aren't working right in my school," and so forth. And then the facilities director is going to be left holding the bag with regard to these problems. I just don't think that the people who put this together, with all due respect, bought it through. And money can solve a lot of problems, and there's no money here for those problems.
Catherine.
So I know principals are very nervous about this because it's just adding another layer of an odd kind of oversight in their sit teams. And from what I understand, a sit team is a voluntary board.
That's correct.
It's not that anybody votes on who is on your sit team. And now we, we've given, the General Assembly has given these sit teams an enormous amount of power, and you're still going to have building principals kind of in the lurch of, "Okay, well, now I have to do what my sit committee is telling me to do in, in hiring." It's, it's not a great situation. And I think that we need to be very cognizant of the fact that our principals are going to have a lot more pressure put on them to do a lot of things that really doesn't have a whole lot of guidance behind it yet.
George first. George, then, then Lisa.
Just hypothetically, let's say there's a serious incident at Richmond School involving health or safety or an employee or student. Would the principal still have the duty to notify the school committee?
If you write a policy, if you write a policy, this is where policy is going to become very important. And the very question that you're asking, George, I just came from a Pawtucket school committee policy, and they were discussing that very question. And their policy committee has said, "No, we're not going to put it in policy." They, they, their, that's going to be their recommendation to their school committee. I'm going to say, you know, my, I had written, written the policy there with it in that the school committee would be notified, but there, you know, remember, they also have sixteen schools and they don't want to hear, you know, six emails a day about, you know, you know, "The police had to be called for this," or "We had to evacuate this school," or "We had a school bus that had an accident." So that, you got to write, you're going to have to approve policies. No, and that's Catherine's point. It could blow up, it could blow up in their face. I mean, I had one principal at another, in another district that I do the special ed work in, at, this, this. work and at, this, this, this stuff was talked to, not in the level of detail we're talking here. And he says, am I gonna be paid more for this? And the answer was, no. And he said, well, why am I gonna do this? And he was told, your association asked for this. You know, um, you know, with all due respect, the superintendent, no disrespect to you, Mr. Ritchie, um, but the superintendents' association is not the most effective people right now, but also the school committee association is not the most effective people. The principals are really viewed as they're gonna make and shake. And I wanna make it really clear, you have some of the best principals that I have in my bucket of principals. You have really, really good people. I have, I wanna make it very clear that I have some good people in other districts. I have some people who don't know when to come in from the rain. You know, and so forth. I'm worried about, you know, those districts because there's a complete lack of common sense. Um, but, um, it, you know, this again, that is, is the law.
Lisa.
So, um, and George and John, you kinda just contributed to what I was gonna say. Around the sit team issue, can we craft policy around what sit teams should look like? Can we, is that an area that we can?
And, and, and again, that has not been fleshed out, but boy, I'd recommend that you try to do it.
Wow, you took my thunder from me.
My, boy, I would recommend you do it. I do know that one, one district gave away the store years ago in their teacher's contract as to the composition of the sit teams. And in that district, it's gonna be an ugly situation because I actually believe it has to be at least 50% teachers.
So, I think that, I, I think that in a future agenda, right, we can start looking at, we can triage which areas we think are, um, need to be prioritized within the district and start looking at policy as soon as possible. And it looks like that might be a good place to start. And then at budget workshop, as I'm thinking about this, we might have to also start to think creatively. If the idea administratively is to decentralize, we might need to, in our budget workshop, look at how, um, we're allocating funds too. We can't allocate funds to a central admin system that has power and responsibility delegated out wide. We might have to look at that money and breaking it down and, and parsing it out to buildings and principals during budget workshops.
I think if school principals are helping to craft the budget in this way, school principals need to participate and present at budget workshops. You know, if, if you're being asked to explain programs at Hope Valley, the principal of Hope Valley needs to explain why this is necessary.
That's such a big learning curve.
Pardon me?
That's a big learning curve, it may be.
Yeah, I think this, there's a big learning curve for everybody and what I'm trying, you know, your takeaway should be, you're getting out of the personnel business, that your real levers are the budget and policy and your meetings are gonna be more dominated by budget issues and policy issues and less dominated by, um, you know, personnel stuff. I also wanna say, I think that's gonna be less of a problem for Charahoe. You know, again, I've never had any of you or any of your predecessors, I've been doing this with you guys for about 10 years now, come in, you know, I've heard that, you know, you've come in and said Cousin Louie can't get a job anywhere else, you gotta give Cousin Louie a job. I mean, the worst case was when I was on the school committee in Pawtucket, and I will identify that district, where the, um, two school committee members walked into the superintendent's office and handed him the list of custodians to be hired. Simple, it was simple as that. The school committee picked the custodians, not the, not the superintendent. That abuse will go, will go away. And that was a really bad thing and I'm not gonna, I can only wonder what happens in some districts like Providence.
Barbara's been waiting. Barbara has a question. Then Sylvia, then Sylvia.
I was actually going to come off of what Ms. MacCaruso said. I think that it may also give you an opportunity to be very creative about how you, um, how you create the policies. Because I was thinking of the sit team too, there should be public on, parents on, from different areas of interest, whether it's arts or sports. I mean, I don't want all sports on something, I would like arts. So, I, I think there's a way to be very creative, but also where the principals are concerned, then it sounds to me like they can have someone who's considered an assistant who handles that and maybe handles it for three or four, you know, all the schools and then goes to the main person who's involved. So, I think there's some creative ways to handle it, to get some of the pressure off, for instance, the principals that are going to be getting a great deal of it. So, there might be creative ways to handle that, um, but you're gonna have to think quickly and move relatively quickly, even if you have to put a policy and then change it. Right, there can be real abuses. And the budget, when each school says, I want the doors fixed and my citizens and our municipal budgets have approved your school budget, which does not have that money in it. You know, you're gonna have to decide where it goes, but certainly my citizens are gonna be looking at that overall to say, how are you abusing, um, the budget that we have given you and we approved and now it's getting moved around too much from different categories because somebody wants it and they have control over it like the sit teams. That's a, it's a problem. But I, but I think Lisa's right, that you can become quite creative, you just have to do it more quickly than you've been used to.
Sylvia.
You said 50% of people on the SITT.
In one district, not here in Charahoe, in one district. Another district I represent. They got it in, they got it in the teacher contract.
They got it in contract?
Yep. So, it's like carved in stone now, like the Ristic symbol.
Teachers go around that school?
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I, you know, I agree very much with Barbara that this is going to create budgeting, um, process. I think your meetings are gonna be a lot more budgeting talk. Um, I have districts now that have very strict policy limits on transferring money, um, from account to account. Um, the Pawtucket School Committee, for example, is, has an agenda item to make five transfers and they're listed as five separate transfers and there will be a discussion on each of the five transfers. Um, for example, their school nutrition fund has run a hundred thousand dollar deficit because we have to provide breakfast like crazy these days and they need to take a hundred thousand out of the rest of the school budget to cover that deficit. And they're gonna have a discussion, they're having it right now as we speak.
So.
Uh, so I have two questions. We, in, we already have in our policies about transfers and what's allowed and then there's also the legal aspect of it. But my question is, we're getting into right now doing a new five-year plan with the state that encompasses the entire district. Is this going to be, um, they only require one principal to be on the committee. Will this be affecting that where we're now going to have to talk to?
I think that if you're writing a strategic plan, my advice, first of all, I, I don't know because this hasn't been fleshed out. The way that I would have it is, I would at least have one meeting where the principals were told to show up and give their input and forever hold their peace. I think that would be a smart thing to do, um, but I would've thought that would be a smart thing to do even if you, you know, didn't have that, this legislation. Where this is gonna create a problem is when you have a rogue principal. And again, you are blessed with very good administrators in this district. And not just the administrators, by the way, in the buildings, also the bill, the central office. You have really good people, you know, who work for you. And, you know, you should be thankful for that.
Bill.
John, January 2nd, we've got a budget workshop scheduled. Are we going to, uh, be spinning our wheels because the state of Rhode Island is gonna come in and say we haven't empowered the principals of the buildings?
My response is, is that you need to, my, my advice to you is, you need to move forward, but you need to be mindful of the role of principals. So, if you're having a budget workshop on the 2nd, principals perhaps should get invitations because if they don't show up, don't complain July 1st when the new budget takes effect that they weren't given an opportunity to give input at the district level. And if they show up, great, if they don't, they don't. I think you just have to be mindful of that, with all due respect, superintendents and assistant superintendents are less important people legally. I do wanna make it very clear that superintendents and assistant superintendents have a ton of wisdom and leadership is gonna come into this. And, you know, your superintendent has been a really, and your assistant superintendent have been really good leaders. And frankly, that's why this district has moved from a middle-of-the-pack district over the last 15 years to, you know, one of the top school systems in the state. There are gonna be other districts, particularly big districts, where you're gonna get the principal who says, no, I ain't gonna do it. And oh, by the way, my sit team, which is half-union members, is with me. You know, and I can see those disputes ending up in RIDE at some point. And Lord knows what RIDE will do because RIDE is very good at spending other people's money.
George.
So, ultimately, it could result in a budget crisis?
If not, if you people don't manage it in terms of policy and having really strict and clear policies that, for example, principal can't go, you know, the principal's given $5,000 for supplies, principal can't spend more than $5,000 in supplies, Mrs. Rogers will reject purchase orders beyond $5,000. She will not go hunting for money to transfer, she will reject them. That's where you have some power, by writing a clear policy that has, frankly, on the transfers, they have to come back to you. That's my own personal opinion, it's my recommendation to you as a school committee, that they come back to you. So, frankly, from Mrs. Rogers' perspective, I have some people in my other districts who would say, no, Mrs. Rogers should have all that power too. But then you can't say you didn't know that there was a problem at, you know, the, the Hopkinton Elementary School, I'm making that up because there is no such school, um, you know, that the principal is, you know, ordering up swimming pools and, you know, diamond rings for the Christmas party and so forth. It's, you, it's been made very clear to you and so forth. And where you will have informal influence is by saying to the superintendent, what the heck is going on in that school? They can't live within their budget, the test scores are going down. Um, you know, Catherine is right that principals are also gonna have to produce. And I will say, in some other districts, I am very concerned that the skill set, you know, the skill set isn't there. Um, you know, I can think of one assistant superintendent who just became an assistant superintendent and now that she's sitting on the assistant superintendent's side of the table with principals, she's like amazed, you know, at the crazy things that get done in schools that end up on her desk that she then gets called in to fix. And these people will now be running the show.
Sylvia.
I can see this causing, um, competitive process between schools. Principals are each going to protect their school where we've usually, with the administration that's over, you know, higher school system, now the principal's in charge, they're gonna be looking at their school, make sure they get what they want. And I think it's, it's gonna cause problems because we only have five principals.
I, I agree with, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna speak for Charahoe, um, but I can see that in some other districts right away.
Any more questions? Jane.
John, on your slides, specifically the slide that says what has changed and it talks about the sit.
Yep.
It says, um, teams shall make recommendations to the principal for development, implementation, and assessment and curriculum accommodation plan. Do you know what the definition of that is? I'm trying to work through the.
And, and the answer is, I don't, the answer is, I don't.
Okay.
The sit team is gonna have a lot of power, but the buck stops on the principal's desk. Um, and, you know, so.
It's a term that I'm familiar with in Massachusetts.
And if it was borrowed from Massachusetts, then I wouldn't.
Accommodation plan, but I've never heard it in Rhode Island.
And this was cop, this law was copied, Barry's right, this is Massachusetts Lite. They copied the Massachusetts stuff.
Some of it.
Some of it.
Not all of it.
Not all of it. And they also, you know, that, you know, it's, it's like charter schools. I mean, again, and I, full disclosure, I represented some charter schools. In Massachusetts, if a charter school is not performing, they close it. Okay? Not in Rhode Island. Not, never in Rhode Island.
And in Mass, it's not, it's a lengthy process.
Right, but they do it.
They, they do it.
You know, they, they, they do it in Massachusetts. Um, and they, you know, in Rhode Island, they don't.
I'm also, I'm honestly also reading a lot more, so I think we need to spend a little more time on, for example, I'm reading about it, this district strategic plan that has to be done maybe three years. July is five years, so I think there's some significant other things here too that we probably still need to delve into a little bit.
I'm gonna tell you.
But it'll all take effect in January?
Yeah. I'm gonna tell you who the smart principals are gonna be. The smart principals are the people who are going to say, don't know it all and are going to go to people like Jane and Barry and Jen Durkin and ask for help. I'm concerned, again, not so much in Charahoe, that there will be principals who know it all and go, go flying solo.
John, can you advise, um, to help guide us as we start to review some of these financial policies? Like, for example, we had our auditor here tonight, would it be prudent for us to hire someone as a consultant for these things? Should we just be thinking about it? I know you have a list here.
Yeah.
Of the policy reviews that we can start with. To make sure we're getting it right and we're asking for help, who should we go to? Okay?
I mean, what my firm is doing is, we are starting to put together model policies. You may not like the model policy for human resources. Um, I think that's gonna be a hard one to, to not like because most of it's already in the law. But you may want tighter control. A, a good example is notifying the school committee of an emergency. Um, you know, in Pawtucket, I had, I had two school, I had three school committee members out of the seven there and they were like, no, we don't wanna know every time you have to call the police. They were very clear about it. They don't wanna know, um, you know, there was apparently a bus accident, they were all notified and it was like, do we really need to know if there was a bus accident? You know? But remember, they have 9,000 students and they have 70,000 constituents, you know? So, their span of control is much bigger than yours. I'm looking forward to the challenge in Little Compton with its 250 student school district where everybody knows everybody.
So, you'll be sending those model policies to us and then they'll be on our agenda for review?
And, and I'll be sending to the superintendent and I will engage in a dialogue with the superintendent and the superintendent, as he does with many things, will say, that won't fly with the school committee, or I think we already do this, or we have a better way of doing it. And a lot of things, frankly, you do better than the state. Let's be, you know, real about this. And then when the superintendent and I come up with something, then it gets presented to you and you guys get your input. And sometimes we've changed things as a result of your concerns, other times you've taken votes, you haven't had unanimous votes. Other times, the best is when it's unanimous. But that'll be, that'll be what the process is going forward.
So, John, alludes me to my only question, which is, one thing I've noticed with Charahoe, we are on top of policy.
Yeah.
So, that being said, are we ahead of the curve on a lot of these issues?
On, on a lot of these issues, we are, but a lot of them, everybody is starting from ground zero. For example, there needs to be guidance for principals on how to do the hiring process. I have one school, for example, where they were doing the hiring on a building basis, not here in Charahoe, and there was an African-American applicant and one of the people on the hiring committee asked if he could touch her corn braids.
Hmm.
Okay? There needs to be training to prevent questions like that.
Yes, it is.
You know, so, you know, principals are gonna need to be trained. This is gonna be a lot more work for Kristen Merritt because, you know, she's gonna need to be, you know, my recommendation is gonna be that she sit in on a lot of, on these hiring interviews and that she, you know, she's gonna need roller skates in August to sit in, you know, on all of them to make sure that stupid questions like the one I just gave you, that people are. that people are told what they can ask and they can't ask. "You're pregnant, right? Does that mean you're going to take a maternity leave? You just got married, are you going to have babies?" You know, those are all questions that you can't ask, but people still work them out. And committees need to be told, "Don't ask that question." You know, we don't ask that question. You know?
I just have a quick question. I just didn't see it online, I know you said, John, that you can have a chance to get the package that you have. Is that ready?
I can--
Oh, well, I just was wondering if we could add to the--
That's fine with me.
It will be in the addendum part at the bottom tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Okay?
That's--
Yeah.
Are we talking about the, is your presentation?
Yes.
Feel free.
Oh, I just wanted to--
So you think you covered it all?
I think I think it had covered it all. Today was just informational to say, "This is coming, and this is the last time you're going to have personnel matters on the consent agenda." And in one of my districts, that's a very important matter.
So we all set with questions, folks? Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
You too.
Moving on to E, necessity of school construction. Sue?
Okay, your five-year plan expires in June of 2021. So you're budgeting right now for the last of your five-year approved capital plan. We are hoping to meet the necessity of school construction deadlines to create the new, it's not called the five-year plan anymore, it's now called necessity of school construction. What is put into the packet is the documentation that needs to be submitted to RIDE by January 15. It's basically three documents, along with a map of the district that I will include. Barry has to sign off, and Brian has to sign off. Then we will be, a few school committee meetings ago, you guys approved the $100,000 that RIDE's giving you. Please don't be under the impression that that's going to cover this. That's not maybe 50% of the cost of this new necessity of school construction. We have to have stage one finished by February 17, stage two finished by September 15, which will get us an approval by November of 2020, which then allows you to be able to budget going forward. But we will have to hire an architect, depending on what the committee chooses to do. You may have to hire an OPM, which is an owner's project manager, for an additional fee. There are, right now, we are going out for additional quotes, but the quote we have just to get us through stage one, currently, would eat up that whole $100,000. So we are in the process of reviewing our options, but going through the plan for the fall approval, I feel is the best option, because if not, you're not going to get an approval until May of '21, and your budget's already been approved. So it doesn't make any sense to wait for the next round, in my opinion.
Any questions? So Sue, you said hiring architect, or project manager, but that varies depending on the scope of the work, correct?
It will depend on the scope of the work. If you were to choose to build a new building, you should have the owner project manager on in step one, in stage one. If you're just planning on upgrading your infrastructure, your HVACs, your paving of parking lots, that type of thing, you may not need an OPM at all, or you wouldn't need the OPM until stage three. But the architect, and there's also an educational component of this, so you also have to have an educational specialist approved by RIDE on this team.
Your committee has a mega.
Yeah, I was-- Yeah.
It's absolutely crazy.
But I do think it's important that we start the process now.
Okay. Any more? You all set?
Unless anybody else has any questions?
Any questions? Hmm? No?
That's what Barry says, I'm only allowed to talk to him like once a week now.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda items. Who needs to pull what? A1 and 2.
Okay, before I pull A1 and 2, I would like to acknowledge donations from Ryan Saunders and Chorus of Westbury of the George Kent Performance Hall to our Charahoe High School Chorus for their benefit concert, in memory of Sylvia Oberant and David DeAngelis.
So you pulled 1 and 2, but you're moving the remainder?
Yeah, I'm moving, and I would like to recommend that we move the remainder, but I just wanted to acknowledge the donation--
Thank you.
--and pull A1 and 2.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the remainder? Unanimous?
Take a motion to approve A1.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining?
I was absent.
Take a motion to approve A2.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining?
Absent.
Okay. Reports?
So like the legislation being Massachusetts-like, the reports are light tonight. On the 11th, you have the winter band concert. On the 12th, you have the Richmond School Holiday Shop. On the 13th, secondary progress reports are issued. On the 14th, the Ashway School Bazaar. On the 16th, the Ashway School Chorus Concert. And the holiday concert for grades 5 and 6. On the 17th, grade 7 and 8 Holiday Concert. And on the 18th, the High School Chorus Holiday Concert. On the 18th, the Ashway School PTO Family Dinner Night. On the 19th, the Middle School Band Winter Concert. And the holiday recess is from the 23rd. Actually, I wonder who does the school calendar going forward? If you'll have one for each building?
John's not listening.
I don't have to do it anymore, that's good for me.
Anyways, 1st of January is New Year's Day, there's no school. The 7th is the Ashway School PTO Meeting. The 7th is also the Childstone PTO Meeting, the Richmond PTO Meeting. The 9th is Early Release Day. The 20th is Martin Luther King Day, there's no school. And the 21st and 22nd is the Richmond School Snow Tubing Event.
What's that?
Get in a tube and slide down the, go down the hill with the snow. Yeah, go.
School committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions. Lisa?
We shared a budget workshop for that engine, of the dates that was on the table, I can be of one second and a sudden, right?
Right, they're at the bottom of there.
Oh, there they are, there they are. Where's--
At the, under the--
Oh, the German.
The German.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Is there also, after the August meeting, is there a third, or you haven't stepped on yet? Sorry, I was--
Yeah. They're on the district calendar. I just put the next few, but yeah, they are on the district calendar, all of them are on for January, February, for the whole year.
Chair, under reports, is it appropriate to discuss this meeting that's in our FYIs? Because it's a date, or not?
It's not on the agenda, you shouldn't talk about it.
Okay. Then my request for a future--
But you could do it in a public forum, or you could have.
Is a school improvement team committee selection criteria policy? Is my request for the--
That's twice.
Listen, you don't have to be chair.
That's twice.
You have to be chair.
So, yes.
If we're going to, Lisa, don't you think maybe we should look at public policies, too? Not just that one, or you think that's the most important?
Initially.
Yeah, basically what John was saying, it sounds like he'll be cracking many of them and then sending them to us.
Right.
With the January start, I thought you might want to get that one, but add them.
Could we just get an electronic communication to us, elaborating who's on the sit teams already? An update?
Can I offer you a little bit of counsel on this? Just pause a minute. Because while John didn't mention it, there could be a move afoot to change some of this. But we'll keep, we'll keep working to align ourselves with it. Lisa, school improvement team--
Selection--
Selection criteria.
Selection, okay.
Criteria, yeah.
Policy.
Gotcha.
Any more requests? Seeing there's none. We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? We're adjourned.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, merry--
No, Merry Christmas, everybody.